Good morning, we will call the order this June 4th, 2019, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, June 7th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Please also silence your electronic devices.
Thank you, and would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For your consent matters, items 1 through 37, you are adopting an ordinance for item number six, amending sections 2.115, 300, 2.115, 310, and 2.115, 320, and adding a section 2.115, 345, related to the election campaign contributions. You waived reading on this on May 21st. For item 21, I do need a motion to continue to 618. That's a retroactive authorization to submit a grant application to the California Health Facilities Financing Authority for the Community Services Infrastructure Grant Program and a centralized jail diversion treatment and resource center.
So moved. Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote, and that concludes my notes.
Are there any comments, questions, issues for members of the board? Mr. Tully.
I think Mr. Serna had his finger out first, but very quickly, I just want to note, item 6, I want to register a no vote on that. And then, a couple of comments if I could on two items. Item 10, ma'am clerk, you're going to call that into the...
Yes. Item 10 is the dry period financing for River Delta Fire special tax.
Yes, I just wanted to thank our staff for working with the River Delta Fire District. I know there are other special districts, park districts and such, in the county who oftentimes, because of the dispersments of the property tax and/or any assessments, oftentimes run very thin on funding and certainly appreciate the work that our staff did to bring coverage. I will just also note that I continue to hear from fire departments along the River Delta. We have four or five that serve those areas, and they continue to struggle with their budgets. In this case, this district went to additional assessment to cover some of its needs, but I know I've been talking to the county executive about that, and we'll probably need to have a conversation with some of our fire district folks down there. So thank you for your work on this one. And then, if I could, on item 31.
Item 31, authorize the Director of the Department of Transportation to execute a memorandum of understanding with the City of Elk Grove concerning rights of way acquisition for the Camera Road project.
Okay. Again, thanks to both county council, as well as our county staff of Department of Transportation, and Mr. Penrose and others who've worked on this. I do want to be clear about in designating our municipalities and/or others with the power of eminent domain, that there's a significant segment of this road to be constructed that goes throughout the corporate area, communities, areas west of the city, in the Franklin community, and that this does provide notice to Department of Transportation, and I see Mr. Carter in the audience, within 60 days if the city intends to use eminent domain. There have been some discussions with City of Elk Grove staff, and I think even Rick, when in his prior life, when he was working for the City of Elk Grove, was aware of this, that we have some access issues that relate to agricultural operations there, and I've been certainly clear with my colleagues in the city and with, again, city staff who've devoted a tremendous amount of time to trying to bring this project forward, that I would hope that the county would be kept informed of the status of those. They may not be eminent domain issues, but as to the resolution, because there are folks that have livestock that will be, have to cross that road. And I don't know, Rick, if there's anything you might want to add, that you have any information to kind of where those stand before we take this action today, so... Or Mike, either one.
Good morning, Rick Carter, Principal Engineer with the Department of Transportation. I don't know the latest status of the access issues that are down there. There is a meeting later this week on the project that I will be attending, so I can follow up with that and get back to you.
Okay. I just think there needs to be some continued, not just communications staff level, obviously. I know that you would reach out to me as the supervisor of the district, but certainly this board, the board's going to delegate this authority. We take it very seriously, I know the city does, and they certainly have demonstrated good faith in discussions and in their use of eminent domain as well, but we're going across rural parcels, in a lot of cases bisecting some of those parcels, and I just think it's really important that with the overall design and the connectivity that we've worked through with the city relative to the town of Franklin and properties there, but nonetheless, the access for folks that are ranching and farming on what will be either side of that road, and in some cases already either side of a more rural setting, that this will obviously improve that road significantly, and traffic flow will result. So, I'm prepared to support this, but again, I would just ask that certainly Mike and Rick and others keep me informed, and if we, you know, again, we're extending this, and I think it's the appropriate thing to do. On the other hand, I want to be sure that those issues are addressed and continue to be in the forefront of their negotiations with folks as it relates to access for farming activities.
Yeah, the department does share that concern, and we'll make sure we keep you informed.
Okay, thanks a lot. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Serna.
Thank you. I'd like the record to reflect my no vote on item 6 and item 28, and then I have a question on item 32.
Item 32 is the Old Florintown Streetscape Improvement Phase 2 Project, a word of bid to Sierra National Construction.
Great, thank you. Question for Mr. Penrose or his staff. I see someone coming down to the podium at this point. My question's this, so we have, we had five bids for this project, and the lowest bid came in at nearly 9% higher than the estimate. And then, if you look at the highest bid compared to the lowest bid that came in, there's a pretty sizable difference there. In the board letter, it is mentioned that there's, in staff's estimation, there's no need to rebid this. So my question is, do we have a process, a standard, in place where when you have so much variance in the bids that come in, and when they're over the estimate by as much as they are, that kind of triggers automatically a rebid?
Steve White, Principal Engineer, Department of Transportation. We don't have a process that automatically triggers a rebid. Essentially, we have delegated authority to the agency administrator for anything that's under $5 million that comes in lower than the published engineer's estimate, so essentially it's the process of taking it back to the board if it is above the engineer's estimate, and we do look at our cost estimates and just make sure that everything looks according to Hoyle, and in this case, being within 10% of the engineer's estimate for the low bid, and it's a contractor that has done a lot, it's a local contractor that's done a lot of work for us, we feel comfortable that that's where the market is at right now.
Okay, I understand that. I guess, I get a little nervous, though, when I see this kind of response for a project, especially when it comes, and as you've heard me say before, when it comes to change orders, when there's so much difference between what we think a project will cost and what the market says it will cost, especially given the, you know, the tension right now in the market for heavy construction. So I guess the point I want to make is perhaps we ought to consider some kind of standard. I don't know if other jurisdictions have something in place where, when all the indicators by way of a response like this point to there being some very different estimates or opinions about project costs, perhaps it's in our best interest to rebid based on a set of standards and avoid the potential for a great deal of change order throughout the course of the project.
In this case, the highest bidder was $1 million higher, and they've been high, they came in very high on Metro compared to everybody else. I really believe they're just an outlier. The low bidder and the second low bidder were within $1,000, were within $14,000 of each other, so we look at that, and we think this is a good bid, and that that's where the market is at.
When will we have, when will we have the first indication in the course of this project moving forward about the nature of the change orders?
We always start off assuming that we've got a good set of plans and that we've identified all of the utilities out there. Generally, what comes up in change orders is going to be unforeseen utilities, hard pan, or basically unforeseen conditions, so it's hard for me to make a prediction about that today. We think we have a solid set of plans, and we're not, you know, we're expecting change orders under 10%, like we see on most of our projects.
I'm not saying what I'm saying to be critical of staff or assume that staff isn't being reasonable in the way they estimate. I just think in this market, there are so many uncertainties that I just get a little nervous when I see something like this.
And then, we understand that concern, and when I personally get concerned is when I see a much bigger spread between the low bidder and the second low bidder. In a case like this where they are so close, we feel pretty good about this bid.
Now, I think we understand the concern, and I'm not aware of an automatic component from other jurisdictions, we can look into it, but I think what Mr. White and Mr. Penrose and their team look at it is how far the outlying bids are. I think in this case, they see it, it's more of a process we go through, but we can look at the other one, too, see if there's a merit to have a percentage there, but not completely say if it's 20% automatically it's a rebid. There needs to be some evaluation done by our staff.
Sure, no, I get that, I just, but I think it's worthwhile to look and see if there are other California jurisdictions that do have some kind of threshold past which there's some kind of automatic scoring system or assessment that takes place that suggests a rebid is the way to go.
Yep, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Peters.
My question is not relative to this item.
Oh, okay. But you have on...
A recusal.
On consent, oh, okay, all right, go ahead.
Let the record reflect, I'm recusing from items 2 and 26 to potential conflict business interests.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, just if I could, one other item I wanted to ask about, item 34, please.
Item 34 is the AC Overlay Project SB1 Phase 2, a word of bid to Granite Construction Company.
Yes, in this case, we actually saw significant positive reflection in the bid amount. I guess my question is, is that knowing the amount of street work that needs to be done in this county, do we have the opportunity in the neighborhoods that are listed here or priority list to, with this bidder, are we going to go out to expand in some of these neighborhoods to do more work than was contemplated, and did we have a bid alternate that allowed us to do that? We've got about 2.28, almost $2.3 million under estimate, and that's positive, there might be some fluctuation in $10 million job. But I guess my question is, is can we expand upon this and get more work under this contract? Or do we intend to go back out to bid for, you know, more work with a quick turnaround?
Supervisor, I think any available savings that are relative to this project would be repackaged in some subsequent project. We wouldn't normally look to add features to an individual project that's already been approved. We have environmental clearance and a number of other things that are tied to it, unless there's very limited ancillary work, as opposed to opening up a bunch of new work. So I think that's the short-term answer, we can investigate that further if you'd like.
Mike, is there any way on some of these, again, I know we've built into some of the work that we project where we maybe have some uncertainty, but to actually do an alternate so that when we've got a contractor, we get a favorable bid, that we then can take that and run with it, because here, you know, for three-quarters of the price, we're getting what, you know, what was contemplated as far as the work, it'd be nice if we could have added, you know, in any of these neighborhoods, you know, obviously, there's a section at Rosemont reflected here, but there's sections in Carmichael and Arden Arcade, there's sections in South Sacramento and the Fruit Ridge Pocket area. So it would seem to me that if we had that, and you get a favorable bid, then you can, while they're mobilized, because all the work that goes in preparing this, let alone gearing up for it, and them being geared up in these neighborhoods, we package it, then we get all those sunk costs, get, you know, the 30% overhead gets built back into that, including the contractors' overhead. Again, maybe it's something that we can consider for the future, is that we start having bid alternates, you know what I mean, and we're not always going to be this fortunate, but I just think it's important, because otherwise, the mobilization on the part of county staff, let alone on the part of the contractor, assuming we have a favorable bid. So I would like to see us do that, because again, we haven't lost the money, but we lose a construction season, we maybe lose to inflation, and obviously, then we have all the work that goes into another bid package and all the oversight, and then somebody else that's going to build in mobilization costs and all their overhead, when they're already going to be out in these neighborhoods, and there's plenty of work in all of these neighborhoods, I'm sure. So I guess I would offer that as a suggestion, and maybe there's some reason why we wouldn't do that, but Mike, I think you're thinking a lot of the environment we're in, and trying to get some of these SB1 dollars and other dollars actually on the ground, which I know, obviously, you're very committed to, and Sir, it's Department of Transportation, but in this case, if there's any way that we could build on this, I'd like to see us consider that, if we could, you know, and maybe we can't, maybe there's legal reasons why we couldn't do that, but I would like to have us consider that.
Good suggestion.
Yep, okay, that's it, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? I have no cards on any item in the consent agenda, so is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, second, with the various changes and no votes and recusals. Please vote.
And the motion carries. Let the record reflect that for items 2 and 6, Supervisor Peters has recused, and there are two no votes on item 6 and a no vote on item 28.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Okay. Yeah, 2 and 26, you recused.
We heard it as 6, so I just, one makes sure there.
You're good, okay. Item 38 is a presentation of service award to Raymond Vasquez for 30 years of county service.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. It is an honor today to stand before you and present this 30-year service award to Raymond Vasquez. Raymond began his career with the county back in January of 1989 at DHA's Research Bureau within one of their bank units. For the past 30 years, Raymond has been an essential component as an office assistant within the DHA county bureaus. Pat Wright Office on 28th Street, L100 at the Arena Office, and Eves on Rutier Road before relocated to Granite Park. I met Ray at the end of 2017, when I became the new supervisor of the clerical unit at Eves. One of his things I noticed is that he is young at heart and has a passion for Star Trek memorabilia. He has adopted a Kling name, one that I cannot pronounce, but I'm sure that he will not mind telling you. Raymond has been a vital support to all programs by continuously providing internal and external customer service. His service and dedication to the county is greatly appreciated. I now present Raymond Vasquez with his 30-year service award. Congratulations, Raymond, and thank you for your service.
I've been thinking about what to say in front of you, and I just want to say thank you for the opportunity of working for the county. Yes, I do have a passion for Star Wars, Star Trek, and yes, I do have friends and family that go with that thought, and yes, I do have a Kling name. It's Khan, Shuwa. I also have a dark side, Star Wars, Darth Khan. And yes, I do dress up in my uniforms. But again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Raymond, I just want to say kapla for your services.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Raymond, before you leave, I don't know if you had a chance to see the segment on America's Got Talent the other night, but they had a person that did voices, and he did a whole Star Wars segment, it was incredible. And so, I think if you didn't see it, you might want to go back and DVR that, and you get a kick out of that, so...
Yeah, I also do voices as well, Yoda.
Well, how about Chewbacca? You do Chewbacca.
You want to hear it? Okay. Ooh, you're the force, Luke?
Very good. Force me with you.
I see a trip to Disneyland in your future, Raymond. Next item.
Item 39 is the presentation of resolution honoring the 2019 Sacramento County History Day champions.
And I'd like to call Dr. Bob up to the podium, as well as Lauren Acosta, Whitney Barnett, and Samantha Phan.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bob.
I'm Dr. Bob Laterry, representing the Sacramento County History Day Committee. Sacramento County History Day, held yearly in early March, is part of the triad including...
Dr. Bob, if you stand between the mics, it transmits better.
I have to shout.
Yeah, there you go.
Sacramento County History Day, held yearly in early March, is part of the triad, including California State History Day and National History Day. Winners at the county level progress to state, and state winners progress to national. It, for ease of description, is a history counterpart of a science fair, and is organized by the Sacramento County Office of Education and the Center for Sacramento History through the History Day Committee. History Day is open to grades 4 through 12, with in California, grades 4 and 5 competing in a poster or a two-dimensional category. 6th through 12th grades compete in junior and senior divisions in one of five categories: performances, exhibits, websites, documentaries, or papers. Each year, a theme is determined that guides the topics the students choose. The theme the students had to follow for this year was triumph and tragedy in history. The upcoming National History Day theme for next year is breaking barriers in history. The education these students get is an adjunct to their basic education, learning techniques such as proper researching through primary and secondary documents. In addition to the judging for progression to state, Sacramento County has a special awards program with a variety of organizations giving awards to stimulate and interest the students in aspects of history they may not generally think of or be aware of. It's always a real joy to see the enthusiasm these students have and the amazing quality of their projects. I encourage everyone to get involved with this wonderful program. More information can be found at SacHistoryDay.org. This year, there are 307 students involved in 203 projects, representing 22 schools. The Board of Supervisors awards are in the special awards category, and this year, three students will be presented a resolution from our County Board of Supervisors. I will now introduce each project and the student involved. Significant is that all three of these students were also what History Day considers champions. In other words, they all progressed to state finals. The state finals are now held every year in our area, instead of alternating between Northern and Southern California, they're held every May at William Jessup College in Rockland. Okay, first of all, I'd like to introduce Lauren Acosta from Cordova High School, and she had an exhibit in the senior division entitled Triumph and Tragedy: The Legacy And next is Whitney Barnett from Miraloma High School, who did a documentary in the senior division entitled Give Them Hope: Harvey Milk's Fight for Equality. Whitney?
And Samantha Sammy Phan from Miraloma High School, senior division, did a website entitled Tinker v. Des Moines: Big Black Armbands Blow the Band Down.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. At this time, I'd like to present all three of these young ladies with a resolution on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the County of Sacramento. I will start with Lauren, because you always start with the Lancers first.
Okay.
Sorry, Susan.
We're on the rules.
Next is Whitney Barnett, Whitney.
There you go.
And finally, Samantha Phan.
Thank you.
And let's get a photo here.
Right.
Over here.
We're getting one.
Let's get it with the back here, there we go. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Well done, I heard great things about your projects.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank the supervisors for their support of History Day and their continuing presentation yearly of this award. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
I just want to note that it's all girls this year.
Mm-hmm.
Girls rule, so yay!
Okay, for item number 40, I do need a motion to continue to June 18th. This is the Twin Rivers Transit Oriented Development and Light Rail Station project.
Second, please vote.
For item 41, this is the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency Executive Director, Communication and Coordination.
Okay, I do have some cards from the public on this item. Hang on, they're coming in as we speak. In the meantime, the board has had an opportunity to take a look at the more fleshed-out version of what was presented earlier, and if you have any questions of county council or anybody else, please chime in right now, otherwise I'll go right to the public comment.
I'd just like to have county council explain that this is basically the same thing the city have passed a year ago.
That's right, thank you. Supervisor Peters, I did have the opportunity to speak with the city attorney and Mr. Levin, the attorney for SHRA, after our last, the board meeting on the 14th, May 14th, to certainly clarify the intent of the previous resolution, and to come to some understanding about what the resolution is that's before you today. And there are no changes to the JPA itself. This is, again, no different than what the city did in their, what they call their linkages policy, establishing a reporting relationship, a direct reporting relationship with the city council, and no changes in their item in the JPA or the roles and responsibilities. That's the same thing that was intended, and certainly what this resolution does, so that it is really about communication and coordination with the county executive's office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Robert Copeland.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate that. Mac Worthy. You want to pass, Mac?
No.
Never.
Good morning, board. I was around when Ann Moore was in the same position. We have a critical situation here of making decisions. When you have an audit of policy and an audit of bylaws, you have trouble. That's trouble in the administration above the director. This is what you have in this situation here, where director could have gone out to the community and talked, didn't. When you eliminated the community, when they had the pact that eliminated the active of the community. When you are choosing people, the city just had a policy putting in on homosexuality, which includes diversity. Now, what's happening here, when diversity come in, and when you put homosexuality in, you got a two-way split here. You got a white male can come in as white and homosexual. Mexicans can come in as Mexican and white. Now, it's a time that you want to push Doja and go back to where the money coming in. The money coming in in Midtown, and if you look at the bigger California cities, you'll see where the lobbies of the buildings. The biggest portion of stuff going on right now is in Midtown. Who was that? The homosexual man on the city council. This is what's going on, but it's not saying it properly to the people. people, which if I hadn't been in the little California cities for almost 30 years and observing what's being put in literature, I wouldn't even know either. But having to be there and observing what went in, this is the situation, and you should be able to have more in the government, which is law and which is not law, in housing. Now, in the housing, you messed up the black neighborhoods, but you never got no top jobs. Think about it. Never got no top job, but you got three black city councils, but nobody put a proposal on the table for nothing of black economics.
Can you wrap up, Mr. Worthy?
What I'm saying, this is a bad issue, and it gonna stink, because you got the attorney situation in a bad situation, because the two previous attorneys left here, and both of them is working for someone like Modesto. And I got other knowledge, which the person that couldn't come here, which I wanted to talk to you about, but you never called her back.
Yeah, yeah. We can talk about that later, because I did. Kevin Carter.
I'm passing.
Okay, thank you, sir. Kim Church.
Not passing.
Good morning. According to item 41, I just read that it was about communication and coordination. And as of a May 29, 2019 title company search, RASA, Redevelopment Agency's successor agency, has 13 vacant public facilities. Housing Authority of City of Sacramento, understand not your jurisdiction, has five, and SHRA itself listed as four vacant public parcels. That's 22 actual vacant SHRA-associated public land that will take years to develop housing, most of which you're going to be spending with the HEEP funds that you are so excited to get. And so, in the meantime, we, as citizens, need, believe that you need to encourage SHRA to coordinate that into emergency temporary shelter now, and you should demand that they do so. In 2018, the governing body, this governing body formally declared a shelter crisis for the duration of 12 months. We've seen six months pass, six months is left, and we have yet to witness any urgency from any of you. I'm going to read a couple of sections of the shelter crisis, just to remind you what you actually put into place. C, public facility means any facility of a political subdivision, including parks, schools, and vacant and underutilized facilities, which are owned, operated, leased, or maintained, or any combination thereof, by a political subdivision through money or derived by taxation or assessment, SHRA. D, declaration of a shelter crisis means the duly-proclaimed existence of a situation in which a number of, significant number of persons are without the ability to obtain shelter, resulting in a threat to their health and safety. Next one, upon declaration of a shelter crisis, the following provisions will apply. The provision of any state or local regulatory statute regulating health safety shall be suspended to the extent that strict compliance would in any way prevent, hinder, or delay the mitigation of the effects of the shelter crisis. SAC County has declared this with the state of California, that a significant number of persons are in harm. And as I've pointed out several times before, you yourself have hundreds of vacant public facilities. Sacramento is seeing an increase in homelessness while you are getting millions of dollars. That contradiction is obvious. The fact that you've obtained $20 million on the backs of homeless people, prioritize non-shelter funding, is literally happening in front of us. We met Kennedy with you a month ago. We've seen nothing. That was May 3rd. It's now June 4th. You said that you were open to outdoor temporary emergency encampments. People have been asking you to come back to the table. We expect that.
Thank you. Cassandra Jennings.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. Cassandra Jennings, President and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Urban League. I just want to say that I support the SASS recommendation. I thank you for the clarification. I do know how important communication is, and I think this will open up the doors, and as a community partner, we are certainly committed to assisting you in any way we can to improve and serve our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Cassandra, and thanks for everything you guys are doing over there. Wanda Cleveland. And Wanda, you also want to speak on 42 later?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
I have a problem. No, you have a problem. We have several homeless people living on the street that are your sheriffs, which you have control over, are treating very badly. I have several pictures and other video of how badly they treat not only the homeless, but the advocates that are standing beside them. You can't keep pushing people around the city or the county without places as theirs. I'm really upset because of the disrespect I have received by the sheriff's department. I have less disrespect for the police department in the city of Sacramento. You don't put someone's, your hands on somebody with a baton. You don't shove the whole crowd to get one person and drag them out, showing people that they are to be feared, not to be a partner. This is what I have observed. I'm only a citizen of the county. This has got to stop, and the only ones that can stop it is you. You guys, I don't agree with allowing these people from Stockton Boulevard to be removed. They were maintaining their life. If they were giving the garbage and the toilets that were asked for prior to this genocide, that place would not look like that. And I want you to tell me why. All these years, the sheriffs have brought them people to that place, and then they're the very ones that criminalize them and put them out. How is that? Do you see how our homeless is so confused? They can't trust you? They can't trust the county sheriffs, and they can't trust any law enforcement whatsoever. I want to make one statement. Your sheriffs hit me on Florin Road, where I had a right to protest. They tried to kill me, and you know what? That's not going to ever happen, and I have anger. Yes, I was the person that was on Florin Road that was hit by your officers, doing what my constitutional rights gave me when I was born. I will never forget. I will forgive.
That's the last speaker we have on item 41. Back to the board. Is there a motion or any comment?
I'll move the item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Item 42 is the Affordable Housing Finance Resources.
You want to take the separate items, just so we don't forget?
Oh, sure.
Separate matters. Let's do that. We're going to go back. We need to take another vote on item 6 and item 28, because Supervisor Serna voted no, yet he seconded the motion. So, we'll take those separately, and the chair will move.
I second the motion for the entirety of the balance, right?
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
And that's for item 6. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Serna and a totally voting no.
And the chair will move item 28.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Serna voting no.
Thank you, board.
Okay. Now, we can go to item 42, which is the Affordable Housing Finance Resources.
I'm pulling it up.
There you go.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Susan Veezy, Program Manager in the Development Division of Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And the purpose of this workshop is to provide an overview of funding resources available for the construction and rehabilitation of affordable housing. SHRA provides gap finance assistance and issues mortgage revenue bonds, which, when used in conjunction with low-income housing tax credits, allow for the development of affordable multifamily housing. By incorporating the functions of the local housing finance agency with the city and county housing authorities, SHRA is able to provide a one-stop shop for developers who require project-based housing vouchers or other resources. The Common Missions also provide for administrative economies of scale. Affordable housing expertise within SHRA improves efficiency and provides time savings for our developer partners. Our in-house expertise is broad and includes everything from underwriting and construction oversight to long-term compliance inspections and refinancing. The need for affordable housing within our jurisdiction is significant. The nonprofit California Housing Partnership Corporation estimates a current need of well over 60,000 units of affordable housing countywide. The average cost to create a single affordable workforce housing unit in Sacramento County is approximately $90,000, when those funds are also layered with tax credit and bonds. Permanent supportive housing for the homeless requires additional subsidy above that. Last year, the county Housing Trust Funds and Affordable Housing Funds generated approximately $3.5 million. In addition, a little over $3 million in home federal funds were available for affordable housing. The county has affordable housing impact fees on both commercial and residential development. The amount of funds generated each year is dependent upon how much new construction is underway. Attachment 1 to your reports provides a more thorough description of these programs. It should be noted that the Housing Trust Fund fee has not been increased since 1990, and only generates, only generated $230,000 last year. Staff proposes to contract for a new NEXIS study to update that fee. Home and CDBG are federal entitlement grants received annually. Funding amounts vary with federal appropriations. Home funds can be used for new construction or rehabilitation, however, CDBG may only be used for rehabilitation. In 2017, the California Legislature approved SB 2, which provided the state's first permanent source of funding for affordable housing. The revenue is generated by a recording fee on real estate transactions. Beginning in the second year of the program, a substantial portion of the resources will flow to local jurisdictions. However, funding to individual jurisdictions is not anticipated to be very high, and therefore jurisdictions are being encouraged to aggregate their resources and to combine the SB 2 funds with local Housing Trust Fund dollars. The SB 2 funds can be used for a broad range of affordable housing activities. The state estimates the county's annual entitlement will be approximately $2 million. The state is proposing a requirement that 20% of those funds be expended on homeownership programs. SHRA is in discussion with county staff about SB 2, but ultimately, if SHRA is to administer these funds, the Board of Supervisors will need to direct the use, as they do with all other affordable housing funding. In 2018, the voters approved a new housing bond. Most of the bond proceeds funded programs which will require developers to apply directly to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Attachment 2 to the staff report provides a more thorough description of these programs. The most significant program funded by Prop 1 is the multifamily housing program, commonly referred to as MHP, which our development partners will compete for to help close large funding gaps that SHRA resources alone cannot fill. CAL Home is a homebuyer program, which provides down payment assistance for low-income homebuyers. The local Housing Trust Fund match is exactly that, a state match of local funds. SHRA has applied for and received both CAL Home and the Housing Trust Fund match programs in the past, and will do so again. It is important to note that HCD is proposing allowing the Housing Trust Fund match from SB 1 to match SB 2 dollars that have been combined with local Housing Trust Funds. To illustrate, if the county has $2 million in local Housing Trust Funds, and then receives another $2 million in SB 2 funds, and adds those funds to the Trust Fund dollars, the county is eligible to apply for $4 million in these SB 1-funded matching resources. Without the SB 2 funds, we would be able to apply for the $2 million in matching funds. So, you were looking at a total of $4 million versus $8 million in potential resources. Other programs through this bond include the Infill Infrastructure Grant and Transit Oriented Development Programs, which developers apply for directly. Through the state's cap and trade program, resources are available to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. At this time, the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities, or AHSC, program, and the Transformative Climate Communities, or TCC, program, provide targeted funding for affordable housing. We have worked with developers to apply for AHSC, but thus far, no project has received these funds, as it is difficult for the Sacramento region, because the focus is on housing density, and densities tend to be significantly higher in places like LA and the Bay Area. The Twin Rivers Project has applied for the current round three of AHSC funding, and was awarded a TCC grant. It is important to underscore the significance of having access to local funds to ensure that we can provide local leverage to our development partners who are competing for the state's programs. Local funds are needed for us to be competitive. The state has converted a portion of the Mental Health Services Act into bonds to fund affordable housing development programs. Counties are the lead agencies for identifying projects and applying to the state for funds. SHRA is working closely with the county to identify projects. Projects have been submitted to the state for the first competitive round of No Place Like Home funding. We are encouraged by the preliminary results. Those two developments will provide 156 units of permanent supportive housing. SHRA and the county are now reviewing two additional applications as a response to our recent request to partner in anticipation of round two and the No Place Like Home funding. Lastly, the-
Excuse me.
Oh, sure, sure.
Supervisor Anatoly.
When she's done, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Oh, when she's completely done?
Yeah, when Susan's done.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. The Special Needs Housing Program is also funded through the Mental Health Services Act funds, and that program is administered through CAL HFA, the California Housing Finance Agency. These funds can be used to refinance or develop new permanent and supportive housing. Lastly, Governor Newsom's budget proposes $500 million to support CAL HFA's Missing Middle Program, designed to fund mixed-income rental housing. It would also expand the state Housing Tax Credit Program, which would significantly increase the resources for developers of affordable housing. In conclusion, while there are substantially more resources for affordable housing development in the state than there were a couple of years ago, only SB 2 provides funding directly to local governments. The bulk of the new resources coming from the state are competitive, and projects will require local leverage dollars to increase their chances of success. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Supervisor Anatoly.
Yes, thanks, Susan, for your presentation this morning.
You're welcome.
A couple of different items here. One, I appreciated the thoroughness of kind of running through what some of the funding streams look like. I guess, one of the questions I have is that with the SB 2 and SB 3 dollars, and kind of your final comment, it's going to require, obviously, some local match. I know earlier today on their agenda, we had the grant applications by the planning department to begin some of the work as relates to the actual general plan and community plans and so forth, I guess, begin to facilitate the accommodation for receipt of those funds. So, if we're looking to further projects, in the sense that, you know, if we have some eligible projects, you know, obviously may have a priority list, we've had discussions before relative to a number of categories here, how can we better, I guess my question is, how can we better position ourselves, you know, for, we're going to have local dollars that float to us, the 2.1 million in SB 2. SB 3 is competitive, and again, I just say the agency's been a good partner, working with other not-for-profits, nonprofits, and other jurisdictions on the veterans part on SB 3. So, how do we get teed up so that, recognizing that there's housing needs throughout this community for a variety of unserved or underserved folks, but also to make sure that we're right there at the gate when it's time to go? And I guess, that's my question, is like, because I want us to be in a position to actively compete, I think, as a community, and certainly as a, you know, a county with other member jurisdictions. You know, we've been pretty competitive over the years, but this is an opportunity that I think if you get in early, in my view, then you may have an opportunity that is one where the field may not be as crowded as I would trust it's going to be in the years to come, because I don't see the housing crisis happening anytime soon. So, what, beyond kind of this general overview, certainly interview of agency and agency staff, what else can we do then, with some limited funding sources, to position ourselves to be ready to move immediately? I guess that's the word I'm going to use.
Well, I think that SHRA is really a recognized model throughout the state and throughout the country, really, in terms of our capacity to implement housing programs.
throughout the country, really, in terms of our capacity to implement housing programs, both on the single-family side and on the multifamily side. I think we're really in very excellent position to be able to provide those local dollars, which we have historically, when they're available. I definitely, just having listened to Mark Stevers from H C D talk about the direction that they're going with SB 2 and the local match, I mean, to me, that is sort of a real opportunity to make sure that we're maximizing that amount of money that comes into us. And so on the housing finance side, I really sense that we are in a good position. We have, you know, long and deep partnerships with the development community, and then certainly, I know that there's been significant amount of effort on the county side, on the planning side, to really, you know, reach out to developers, figure out on the land use and entitlement side, you know, what they can be doing to, again, make sure that there are developable sites in appropriate areas and to really try to streamline. And I imagine, I don't know if LaChelle has anything to add on that.
If I just could, based on, I know LaChelle wants to weigh in, but so if we have land, because that was part of the ordinance structure that we had for a number of years, and, you know, we didn't get too many sites, but I think we got, you know, a couple of designated sites. And I, when I think about land, I think about what might be available either at Mather, and we've had this discussion most recently about how, again, with, you know, housing, with Arena, how we get some credit for that. I don't know where that stands. That wasn't the agency's task. I think the Exec's Office was going to work with the Planning Department. But again, you know, if you bring land to the equation, which is only a piece of it, it would seem to me that that puts you in a better position with, you know, developers, but certainly with, you know, other places in the state who may not have that availability of land and, you know, and, and so I'm curious about that, too. So I don't know, LaChelle, if you want to...
Just to follow up, in terms of what Susan was saying, is that I think we are well-positioned, but one of the things that we're hearing very clearly from the state is they really want to see you leverage your funds with any local dollars. So some of the other jurisdictions, larger jurisdictions that have passed, like a tax where they have huge funds, are really well-poised. However, I think that because we have such a great infrastructure relationship with developers, and, like you said, we have available sites. We're fortunate that we're not like some of the jurisdictions that really don't have anywhere to build. We do have definite areas that we could start building, so to take advantage of this SB 2 money, if we take that and leverage it with our local Housing Trust Funds and our home funds, all the other federal funds that are flowing through the agency, and have projects that are ready to go before the money comes, that's the way that we can be most successful, because that's what they're looking for. The state wants to see the jurisdictions are ready to move quickly and to be able to get projects up and going.
Okay, so again, you know, you play a key role in this, but I trust somebody's going to keep us informed of how that comes together. Obviously, this board on many occasions has, you know, certainly as a collective body, has expressed, you know, desire to try to, you know, advance some of these things. And now with some money available, obviously, it'll probably fall way short of what the demand or need is out there, but I just, I want to be sure that we follow through. I also want to just ask quickly about it. I know when we briefed yesterday, we chatted, we've talked about motel conversions, we've talked about other properties, and I know you had a, you know, workshop with developers and potential partners earlier in the spring, and thank you for your leadership on that. But I still think it's going to require the agency working with the local jurisdiction, i.e. in this case, the county, where we've identified, you know, five or six or maybe a few more, you know, properties that are in a condition where significant rehab and reinvestment could produce housing, and I think would be welcomed by adjacent communities, neighborhoods, in the event we were able to pull that off. So I guess I would just ask that maybe after the summer break here in a few weeks, that maybe come back in the July timeframe, if that's possible, with some follow-on discussion about where we are with that, and then how the agency and working with the county and other partners can advance those conversations beyond just where we are today. And so I think that's going to be a key, important piece of it, and hopefully maybe some of these monies can be available. Lastly, I just wanted to ask about, there's a piece in here under the Department Veterans Affairs, and I know with our Veteran Services Offices that we assist folks, but will they allow direct lending to buyers? And not just for homes, but for farms? And when I see some of the stressors in some of the farm areas in our community, the opportunity for somebody to get in for a parcel of land, assuming that they have that, you know, interest, that to me could be significant. And, you know, not all counties, a lot of urban counties probably don't have that ability. So I'd like to see, again, how the agency and the county could work together with our Veteran Services Office and certainly Department Veterans Affairs to make sure that we get the word out there, and if we have qualified veterans, we've got a large pool of veterans and a lot of folks returning from conflicts in the Middle East and Afghanistan and elsewhere that, you know, are, you know, early in their lifetimes, have done honorable service for our nation, but could be positioned to, you know, if that's what they really wanted to strike out and do, and still do it here in California, in Sacramento County. And so I'd like to see us have an opportunity to, you know, broadcast that, but also maybe to encourage some folks. Again, we're not going to make those lending decisions, but to help folks be qualified for that and to help the veteran pool here, which, you know, is in excess of 90,000 people in the Sacramento County region, and some of those returning vets in particular, or someone that are well along in their lives that may want to get into farming and have an opportunity to do that. So I'd like to see us participate actively in whatever way we can. Thanks.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Going back to your presentation, you're kind of going through them bullet point by bullet point, and you skipped over C D B G.
Oh, I did mention just that it's eligible, available for rehab, and it's part, and with the home funds.
Well, here's where I'm going with this. This is good information, so now we know the titles of the funding sources. I would like to know in more detail, over the last, I don't know, let's say, three years, how much was spent in each of those categories? You know, what, I mean, maybe we applied for X amount, and how much was actually spent? More results-oriented, so we can see, you know, what was accomplished by you. I realize on one project, you may use funds from half a dozen of these categories. But I think for us to understand how much money flows into the Affordable Housing Fund, for instance, and how much was spent in the, you know, fiscal year, in two previous, because we've, the economy's been pretty decent the last couple of years, and just get some understanding so when we're talking to staff about a project, we can look at, you know, the Home Investment Partnership Program or Community C D B G and say, well, what about using money from this or this, and, or why haven't we spent this money? I mean, I doubt there's too many categories like that, but I think that would be really helpful. And then I would like it to be by jurisdiction, so separate the money that goes to the various cities from what the county gets, so we can know, you know, to have more ownership and responsibility for the funds that come to the county.
Sure. And fortunately, this item was continued, and it was so perfectly packaged with our Housing Trust Fund reports, and I would have been able to say so, but we will make sure to do that, because it was, we kind of had a nice little...
And I, you know, I don't remember the whole discussion, but if it was asked for like that, but I think, you know, this is, this is a good start, but it's, it's got some more development of the subject to go on here. Just, I think that's what we're all after, is how much do we have as a county, and what are we spending it on, and what have we spent it on?
Absolutely. So what we can do is, the information from that Housing Trust Fund, we can take that and put it more into a table format?
Yes.
That really kind of breaks it down, so you can see them all together versus separate.
Yeah.
So that way you can see...
That's what needs to be, because, I mean, it's good to have it in written form, but it's, would be much better to have it in a table.
We'll pull that information together for you.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I'd like to dovetail, perhaps, put a finer point on what Supervisor Peters just brought up. I think the presentation is helpful. It gives us a sense of the toolbox, but it doesn't really kind of give us a sense of how the tools are being used and, you know, what is the finished product. And I'd like to, I'd like to propose something, because I think we all, all five of us sense this in one way, shape, or form, and that is, we're concerned and we remain focused on units, and we want to see the units built, we want to see the units occupied. We just had the previous item where hopefully, as incidental as it may have seemed, that this new spirit of cooperation and maybe a better working relationship between the C E O and the S H R A Executive Director's Office will help inspire some of this. But I'd like to propose that on an annual basis, S H R A, working with county staff, take an inventory and do it by supervisory district, work with the supervisors to kind of hone in certain areas, certain neighborhoods, where we'd like to see more affordable housing, because we're the ones that have our ear to the rail the most in terms of what our constituents need. And map out for us, where are those vacant sites? Where are the, where are the opportunity sites for affordable housing? And I would suggest that each year before, but close to our budget cycle, before we get into conversations about our budget in earnest, we get some sense of what the missing financial pieces are that would be required to bring to fruition, the development, the construction of affordable housing on those sites. And we can be reasonable about it in terms of scale, not suggesting we're going to go out and be able to do, you know, every single vacant lot out in every supervisory district. But I remain very frustrated, just by way of example, when I am out in the South Oak Park community, the square mile roughly of unincorporated county that's in my district I pay close attention to, and I continue to see large vacant lots. I know there's, you know, a dearth of affordable housing, even in one of the most economically-challenged neighborhoods anywhere in the region. And so I'd like to see that change, and I want to think carefully about how to do this. But given, given the report that was just presented, again, we were kind of given the pieces to work with, but I'd like to suggest we do something different than what we've done in the past that actually seeks to produce the units and have them occupied as soon
Supervisor Frost, if you can indulge me, because I'm going to pick up on that, because Supervisor Serna actually more eloquently stated my fourth point I was going to make, and I'll make more later, but I completely agree. S H R A, you got me the list of sites within District 2 a while back. I appreciate that, but more information is needed to make decisions and to really see what the real picture is. I'd like to see something like that in, in table format, showing what properties there are, a description of the property, and why or why not, you know, where they are on the priority list as far as potential development?
Ownership.
Not just the financial part, but...
Need to know the ownership of the property.
Right, exactly. And, you know, if, if this is showing up on our ledger as an S H R A property, but it can't be developed for whatever reason, you know, an explanation of that, because I just don't have a clear picture, particularly those larger sites, and that actually takes them, for example, 44th Street, which I wanted to publicly thank you very much for including my office in the evaluation of the R F Ps. I'm very excited about that. But, you know, it wasn't until six months ago I knew that was even an opportunity, you know? So I just think that the board would like to have a better idea of what opportunities there are out there in publicly-owned property. You know, as Supervisor Serna said, we're not going to build 60,000 units next year, you know, but, you know, where are we on a priority list and what's, what's available?
And quite frankly, if I could add to that, the reason I would suggest that we get used to doing this at a certain time in the course of the year, close to but preceding our budget discussions, is that if there is, if there are instances where, in the interest of cobbling together all kinds of local funding that's necessary for match, whether it be at the state level or federal level, that can be part of our budget-making decision in perhaps the following month, and at least it gives us something to discuss, debate perhaps, in terms of priority setting. But that should be, you know, front and center for us to be considering on a very regular basis.
Supervisor Frost.
And my comments are just dovetailing a little bit on Supervisor Peters around C D B G and Cap and Trade, and I'm wondering, I know, I'm also curious to know where, where the money is going and where our opportunities are, but what types of opportunities are there? Like I know with C D B G or Cap and Trade, there are other opportunities that might enhance communities, and what is the protocol around that? And how can we, you know, what can we do with that money so that we can sort of wrap our heads around some possibilities and maybe have a better idea of what we can come to you and say? I'd like, I have some projects that I think C D B G might work with, but I'm not positive what your protocol is on where the money goes, or what it's attached to, or whatever. So I think, I know you're using it coupling with other funding opportunities and grant opportunities for housing, but are there other projects that can be done in the communities with, with those funds in the unincorporated areas?
And I should probably just say for clarity, too, that this kind of goes back to our multifamily lending policies, that we do two funding, open funding rounds a year, and we advertise the amounts of funds available, and then developers, you know, come to us, just, just for your awareness, too, of a little bit of the process of how the funds get, you know, from S H R A out to developers to increase the supply.
Okay, so it's just through, just to developers, not through us as well? We can't come to you and say, we, we have some things that we want to do in our community?
Absolutely. Those are more of what we call our agency-sponsored, where, let's say, I think Courtyard Inn is a great example of where we really wanted to do something at that particular site. So then we actually went out and started to get a developer and to put the vision in place. So there's two, there's some developers come to us and others that we actually want to advance. And what I hear you saying is, you want to hear, get information about what's in your specific districts so that you can be more proactive about what projects you see coming to your supervisory districts.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we, we've approved some projects in the past for street lighting or whatever that sounded really exciting, and I thought, wow, that would be, I can think of some places where we could do that in my district, too. So that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, on the C D B G.
All right. Thank you very much, Board. I have a couple of comments. One is, and I brought this up, this is probably aimed at LaChelle and Nav, or whatever, and that's, that, it's a small thing, but it's, it's still, a million bucks is a million bucks. And when we came forward with our two proposals for No Place Like Home fund, funding, you know, we're paying fees at the local jurisdictions, and it drives me crazy that we're paying $900,000 to the City of Sacramento to get homeless people off of their streets. It seems like all, it seems like all of the jurisdictions should be in this together, including us, and try to do everything we can to bring down costs, and charging the county, or county charging other jurisdiction fees to do affordable housing, I think is a mistake, and it's an opportunity to bring down those costs a little, I mean, like I said, a million bucks is real money. So I'd really like to revisit that and see if there's any opportunity to do something to bring those fees down cross-jurisdictionally. Secondly, Board knows I represent large counties on No Place Like Home Steering Committee. We had our meeting last, last, yesterday, actually, and it's very exciting. The money's going to start flowing. A lot of the kinks have been worked out. We changed a lot of things that 2020 hindsight helped have a better picture. So I do think that we're going to have more opportunities coming up, and particularly larger counties are going to see, I think, more opportunities, just because that's where the need is, number one, and also because of the bandwidth. We, we have the technical ability to really work with the system, whereas in Alpine County, you know, makes it more difficult. So that's just a No Place Like Home update, that money's going to start flowing again. So with that, I do have some cards from the public, so thank you very much.
I'm going to say this. When you have an emergency, you don't wait six months to call for help. It's a crisis. Homeless people have... It's a crisis, homeless people have nowheres to go. You put yourself in their place right now, and you're being pushed by law enforcement, and no one's there to help, how would you feel? To me, SHRA is not doing anything except buying up property and then calling the cops out to expel them off their property. I don't understand that, please make me understand that, please. We're all one paycheck from being on the street ourselves. Let me tell you, back in 1989, I'm doing all the right things, I ended up on the street with three teenagers. They learned a lot of bad things, how to build bombs, how to manipulate, how to create havoc, and do you know, those three teenagers now are productive people in society. For being homeless, every one of them owns their own home. The experience that I had made their lives prosperous. I didn't have the county, or the city, or anybody to help me, I did the best thing I could, in an abusive relationship, being beat, being a drug addicted, being in-housed, and being pushed out by law enforcement. Not to only say that my daughter was molested, and I reported it, and the Sheriff's Department looked at me like I was the bad guy. I did, like I said, I did everything I was supposed to do.
Can you wrap up? Wanda, can you start to wrap up?
We need help. If we can't get help from you guys and stop this rogue Sheriff's Department, we're supposed to, we're paying their wages, we as taxpayers pay their wages for them to abuse us? Come on! Are you guys, you guys are getting paid, and you're allowing them to abuse us?
Thank you, Wanda.
No, it's not thank you, it's do something, I don't want thanks. I want you, and you, and you, and you, to step up to the plate and do what you're being paid for.
Thank you. Robert Copeland.
I know this is not on the agenda, but what are you going to do about the apartment complexes that are currently vacant? There's one on MLK Junior Boulevard that's vacant for years, and as far as all these funds you're getting from the state, county, whatever, a drop in the bucket. Because SHRA can spend tens of millions of dollars to rehabilitate their current existing properties like mine, the Comstock, which has a broken elevator, and we got a plumbing problem, plus, we need to spend more money on new housing in Sacramento County, on all these vacant properties that SHRA owns, the city owns, the county owns, the other cities and your jurisdictions own. I mean, most of the money is going to probably Los Angeles, where the great, they need over several hundred thousand affordable housing units. We're not, we're going to get a sliver compared to LA in the Bay Area. We need, I think, outside the box, be creative and get our funding, so we can get more affordable housing built now, not 10 years. The way you're doing it now, it's going to take forever to do the 60-some-thousand units, with the drop in the bucket you're getting from Housing Trust funding and all the other sources. We need more funding now, thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Barbara Ramey-Clark.
Now I see what the problem is. 16 years ago, I was up here as a Sacramento Housing Alliance Board member, when we got the Inclusionary Housing Pass for 10% of housing to be built in new construction, and it got, the BIA came in and usurped some of the existing council members in the deal with flat. So now, eight months ago, you call a crisis, you say that we have an emergency homeless shelter crisis, and then you come up with a homeless plan in November. How is that homeless plan going? Who is working on this homeless plan of the community at large with all of these committees, whether it's the Consumer Focus Group, the Housing Focus Group, or the cities and the counties and the nonprofits focus groups? I would like to know how this $20 million that was supposed to have been set up with the homeless initiative money, with the Sacramento Steps Forward and the City of Sacramento, I'd like to know how that is going, and how that's being spent. And I think that Sacramento Housing Alliance, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment has too much power. You need to take something from them. They came in, they're usurping everything, people who get these darn vouchers can't even find housing, the landlords don't even want to rent to them, and then they are taking over and making all the deals with the contractors. They've taken the place of the BIA, and it's just really not working out very well. You have all these vacant lots, that they have these projects that they're going to be building on when? In five years? In three years? And they don't want safe ground to be there, to occupy it, while they are putting their plans together? They can't put some dumpsters out there? They can't put some toilets out there, when they know a project is not going to be started for another two or three years?
Thank you, Barbara.
They have too much power. We need to, and if they can't share, they don't need to have all of the, all of the building industry and everything in their pockets, and that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you. Ms. Dozier, I do have a question. The county does, as it was said, have an adopted homeless plan. By virtue of the fact that we have adopted a plan, that puts us in line for more funding than had we not had a plan, including No Place Like Home, is that correct?
That is correct, it has placed the county in a position to receive millions of dollars from the state.
And there's a number of counties that don't have a plan that will not qualify for the millions of dollars.
Correct, and the county was very proactive and was able to get a lot of those things done ahead of the funding, so they were first in line.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just support that, that I think when you look at what the direction is from the state on this funding that they're making available, the kind of work that we're doing on a county-wide basis can be very helpful.
I've heard that. Thank you. Okay, Mac Worthy.
To follow the young lady is what I've been saying for some time. You circumvented a situation here that you should have gotten more input on, understanding that you've got two governments here, and one side is not getting the report. And I don't know what you're doing by it, but it's a situation. Fund resources, pitiful, pitiful people, fund resources. What do the neighborhood know? Nothing. The Dorseria Project went with one guy come down and testified, and he didn't even know how to sign up to speak at Falls and Dozier's lab. We went over there and asked people, "Do you know when meetings?" No. We went to CB Circuit, the same thing, no. Falls and Dozier's lab. The people around her, fake voters, is critical. The NAACP and the Urban League is garbage people. A frog cannot do anything but feed a snake, and that's what you got, that's what you got. If you would get to the leadership from the neighborhood, that's all we say, it don't have to be me, get the leadership, so we can go in and ask some questions on trust funds. There was no questions on trust funds in the city until I raised the trust fund. Get away from bonds and deal with trust funds. Trust funds got a back at Obama, which was just 3% right now, and you can borrow at a 6%. What is the people in the neighborhood doing about their funds? We can't go and say, "We want to report on how much it takes to, that we had to put into the pot to build four units as the residents of this neighborhood." That's gone, we can't go through that. Who is causing shots? Developers even come in and say anything, and they get their findings. Pitiful people. These are the things, that reason I'm a Republican, business people, we got to go to business instead of bullshit. This has been bullshit over these past 30 years in this town. Affordable housing is anywhere, it depends on who owns the housing and who wants the house. Look at the bus, we got cars parked everywhere, three families in one house with three bedrooms, $1,700 of money. How'd I lose my due place? I had no help. So wake up, people, and look at the situation here, that what you should have done on the understanding what the left hand doing to the right hand, you bypassed, that might call politics, but that should have come in. These are the things that we...
Can you wrap up, Mr. Worthy?
What we are doing, when we look at Roger Dixon, Roger Dixon was in here the other day, and he got funds when he was supposed to buy it. The guy Tyrone was over from the Deppers Heights...
Mr. Worthy, I need you to wrap up.
Now, I need to say this, to come in and get that money, why can't we get some money? SHRA gave money to NAACP, for what, man? Wake up and let's get some answers here.
Thank you. Kevin Carter.
Good evening, top of the day, Board of Supervisors. My name is Brother Kevin Carter, I am a member of the California Poor People's Campaign in the hands of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I'm here on behalf of the people of the City of Sacramento and the County of Sacramento and the urban and rural areas. We recently did a tour here, and testimony on deep poverty, and the issue of deep poverty, and where it goes economically, and where we're at economically. And economically is, we're in between too much red tape and not enough red ribbon when it comes to the poor, and the disenfranchised, and the mentally ill, and I'm sitting here listening to you discuss these budgets between the developers, SHRS and housing, and these things today that acquire housing for the poor and the disenfranchised. Right now, that's not available, as we can see. We see the urgency right now, as we seen on Stockton Boulevard, and now those folks that have been released are now along the cemeteries, and I say that's shameful on the work of our civic leaders, by not attacking this problem and making sure that these things don't happen to our most vulnerable people that are out here suffering today. So, I'm not going to sit here and badger and beat up on anybody, but we need to come to the truth, because right now, what's happening is the words of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King would say, "What you're doing now is like flinging a coin to a beggar." His emphasis only creates a beggar, and that's what's been happening here when it comes to those that are in deep poverty. And the voices that you hear that are coming up here, it's nothing but pain and suffering, and the only ones that can stop this pain and suffering are you, because you are the leaders, and we're asking you for this leadership. I'm more than asking you, because I'm getting ready to go to Washington DC to ask the Senate to help you in this cause, because it's important, because right now, a tent is a resurrection to a new beginning, but these folks cannot even get to the tent to start the resurrection because you won't allow them. You won't allow them to have a place to where they don't have sleep deprivation, a mental illness.
Can you wrap up?
Yes, I'm going to wrap it up.
Thank you.
But this is what we're allowing to happen now, this deep compassion of suffering, and it needs to stop, and we need to come up with a plan now, because the urgency is now.
Thank you. Okay, that is the last card that I have. There's no other member of the public that would like to return a card, we'll bring it back to the Board. Any comments, questions?
Mr. Chair. So, again, I think, obviously recognizing the comments that members of the Board made, certainly members of the audience, maybe this is something that we ought to, I mean, we deal with it regularly in different contexts, but it would seem to me that maybe we have a regular report to this Board every 60 days, a status report, opportunity to weigh in, and not just SHRA, but I think the team of folks that's working on this, so we know where we are, not only in budget cycles, but in applications, and in work that's going forward, and I think evaluation of the effectiveness of the investments we are making, but also, you know, where we're falling short, and we need to shore that up, and where our support can, you know, hopefully be helpful in that regard. So, I'm just going to offer that as a suggestion, but I do think that we ought to have regular reports and discussions on our agenda on a regular basis.
Thank you very much, I agree, and will speak with the county executive about seeing that we get something on there.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, this was information only, so we will move on to the next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 43 is the 2018 Sacramento Promise Zone and P3 Update.
Good morning, Chair, members of the Commission, Board of Supervisors. I'm Tyrone Rodrick-Williams, Director of Development at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, and Director of the Sacramento Promise Zone. My purpose here today is to provide you with an update on two activities. The first is, are some of the accomplishments of the Sacramento Promise Zone, and then to talk about our P3 program, which deals with housing homeless youth who are at risk of being homeless, homeless on probation, or aging out of foster care. In 2015, we received, we, meaning the city and the county, applied for and received a federal designation known as the Promise Zone. We competed with 93 other cities from around the country and were selected. The purpose of the Promise Zone is really to have federal agencies assist local communities in three areas. One, attracting resources that can either be financial or through technical assistance. Two, to create a cross-sector collaboration among the federal agencies, as well as city, state, and local organizations. And three, to look at expanding the impact of services in the community. And on an annual basis, we come before you to provide you with an update on our success. The Sacramento Promise Zone is highlighted in this yellow area, it includes, and that, the way that that map was created was that HUD provided a tool that required specific census tracts to be connected and fall within certain guidelines. We, like, out of all of the 16 urban promise zones, are only two that have a city and a county included in the promise zone. Sacramento County is included in that lower, in the southern portion highlighted by the red area. Our accomplishments are many, but this is just a short highlight of some of them. HUD did not provide any direct financing, no money came with this designation. But what did come with the designation was a federal liaison who was assigned to Sacramento to help navigate in Washington, connecting to the senior-level representatives in the federal agencies. To date, we've worked with the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD, the US Department of Education, the US Department of Health and Human Services, the US Department of Labor, the Small Business Administration, the US Forestry Service, and the Library and Museum Association. Our current HUD liaison is Dr. Michael Huff, and he is providing direct assistance in connecting. We are also part of the National Coalition of... We are also part of the National Coalition of Promise Zones, which meets once a year, but has monthly phone calls to collaborate, almost all of us. The purpose of the coalition is at the national level to constantly be making aware of the opportunities in each one of our cities and the needs of our cities. We're also in California, the only state that has a California affinity group that has a direct connection with the US Department of Education. Every two months, we're having a call with the US Department of Education about activities and issues related to early childhood development, high school completion, college-to-career training, and we're working with both school districts, the community colleges, and UC Davis and Sac State in that effort as well. New to this effort is the Opportunity Zones, which is the hot topic around the country. And in, we've been engaged in looking at what the regulations are. We worked with county staff in identifying what the Opportunity Zone census tracts within the county would be. And at this point, what we are in the process of doing is planning a conference with investors, connecting the community, the opportunity, and the investors. And that, that information will be forthcoming, but it will be led by HUD. In addition to that, we're also working to create health fairs and opportunities for health and wellness. We're working with Kaiser Permanente and Samuel Mary University and the Community Nurse Corps and expanding opportunities in the community and organizations to have a certified nurse who's in the process of getting a bachelor's degree through Samuel Mary University be placed in organizations and helping local residents not only with their health issues, but lifestyle that leads to health as well. We're, as I shared, we're working with Sac State. They were deliberate in identifying their downtown campus within the Sacramento Promise Zone to assist us in our job training and job creation efforts. We work with the Crocker Arts Museum and their Block by Block Initiative. We actually had a special webinar from the California museums and as a result of that, through the National Endowment of the Arts, our Crocker Museum was awarded funds for this project. We're also working with UC Berkeley, with Y Plan, which works with students in the Sacramento Unified School District to come up with plans and strategies to address urban problems. We are working again this summer with our Summer Engineering Experience Program, which is CEAC, that targets third, fourth, and fifth grade students in science, engineering, technology, and math activities. And as part of our economic development outreach, we contributed to the Mack Road Partnership's Business Walk, which had two purposes. One, to identify business opportunities, but the other to identify employment opportunities from those business owners. We continue to work with Jobs Plus, which is a federal program aimed at providing job training and placement resources to public housing residents. And we are a participant in the P3 program, which is the Performance Partnership Pilot for Disconnected Youth. The purpose of this program, we were awarded this funding, which is $250,000, which came from the US Department of Education. It did not include any funds from the city or the county or any local funding requirement. We're the only housing authority in the nation to receive the designation for this P3 program. The purpose of the program is to provide housing through housing choice vouchers that are set aside for this pilot program. It is a three-year pilot program and the purpose is to look at housing resources as the foundation for youth who are on probation, homeless, at risk of becoming homeless or aging out of foster care, providing them with housing choice voucher and assistance in attaining housing, then moving to high school completion, onto job training and job placement. Our current partners include the US Department of Education, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, the US Department of Labor. Our local partners are Wynn Youth Services, Waking the Village, Lutheran Family Services, Volunteers of America, Sacramento Regional Youth Conservation Corps, Sacramento County, providing mental health services to the participants in this program. It is a three-year program. Currently, we have thirty-five individuals who've been referred, because this is a referral program, referred through either Wynn Youth Services, Waking the Village, or Lutheran Family Services. We have thirty-five who have been referred and placed and found housing using a housing choice voucher. We currently have forty individuals who are in the process of completing their information and receiving a housing choice voucher. And we have a new partnership that's being launched with Kusumnus River College. As part of the goal of this program is college training and job placement. Kusumnus has a number of students who are in the process of completing their, their training, but are in need of housing who fall into those categories and we're happy to participate with them in this pilot program. In addition to that, we're working with over eleven banks in our financial institution partnership opportunity to come together to look at coordinating resources to fund local organizations who are providing job training and job placement. We were invited to present at the Federal Reserve in Washington DC. We are the only promise zone in the nation that has this partnership and we were asked to come and give an update as a best practices from Sacramento. We're also working with Envoy and Carshare to place electric vehicles, not only throughout the city, but particularly in the promise zone and in communities of color. And we were awarded through the Strategic Growth Council, a $23 million grant to support the work of the Sacramento Integrated Multimodal Place-Based Initiative Project, which uses the Twin Rivers community and the River District as the catalyst for broader neighborhood revitalization. In addition to our initiatives, we've supported jump bikes being placed throughout the promise zone, supporting the Build Black Initiative that supports economic development, as well as the Black Child Legacy, which is changing the lives of young children and increasing life expectancy. That concludes my presentation. Last month, because of the success of this program and the fact that we're leading the nation in addressing issues related to youth who are homeless, we were awarded a, we received an award from NARO, which is the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, acknowledging our work and our success in leading the nation and using what we're doing here in Sacramento as a best practices for others around the country to follow. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, and congratulations, first of all, on the award, Tyrone. So when you look at the map, there, and you mentioned this, there are basically two neighborhoods, two areas that are in, in the unincorporated part of the promise zone. Is there anything in particular you would stress about how Supervisor Kennedy and I should understand the opportunity as it relates to just the unincorporated area versus the larger portions of the city of Sacramento?
We're happy to discuss at any point opportunities, but our view of the promise zone is it is one zone. And so many of our initiatives are not limited to whether it's in the county or in the city. It is, how can this address residents in need? One of the benefits of the promise zone is that while we do have a highlighted area, all of the programs and activities are not specifically limited only to those highlighted areas. And so many of the activities that we are doing are impacting many other areas, including the county, but outside the highlighted areas as well. But if there's a particular interest or need that we may not be aware of or that you would like to highlight, as we're looking at opportunities to expand partnerships, expand impact and services, we'd be more than happy to talk about ways in which to do that.
I should have been clear. I wasn't suggesting that, that there's some important distinction to be made about the difference in opportunity between the incorporated portions of the promise zone and the unincorporated. But from a technical standpoint, is there anything that we should be aware of in terms of very particular opportunities that, for instance, county funding? If, if we brought matching funds for any particular initiative, is there a unique opportunity in the unincorporated portions under the direct oversight supervision of your county supervisors versus the city council? Is there anything like that that we should be considering?
At this point, I think that because all of our work is really combined, one of the key things that would be helpful as we're applying for grants, and let me just say, most of the funding, over $140 million, has come into the promise zone. Most of that has not gone to SHRA, by the way. It's gone to those entities and organizations who are doing work in the community. Many times when they, there are grant opportunities and all of those are listed on our website. The agency that funded it, the agency that received it, and how much they received, and that's available for anyone to review at any point, and it is updated as we are informed about applicants receiving that funding. But sometimes that funding requires matching funds. In the case of P3, it did not require any additional matching funds. But sometimes to be competitive, as we talked about with our housing issues, having some resources from the city or from the county to be able to use as matching funds helps that applicant become much more competitive. And the higher degree of matching funds that are available makes the application much more competitive. That is one way, not only the county, but any jurisdiction, including the city, that could be helpful in certain cases.
I think also what would be very helpful is for us to sit down, have a conversation and talk about some of the needs in those communities. You know, we've been working like in the avenues and some of those communities for a very long time. There are a couple of affordable housing complexes down there that we've tried to get off the ground. So sitting down and really talking about how we can really leverage the resources from the promise zone with any local resources could really make some significant changes. So that would be an opportunity for us to have that conversation.
I appreciate that. And the things that come immediately to mind, for instance, are the, you know, the time and energy and the investment that Supervisor Kennedy continually makes as it relates to Maple Neighborhood Center.
Right.
The same for myself as it relates to the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative, serving the other side of the freeway, so to speak. And, you know, have we really kind of scrutinized how the promise zone could, you know, how we can maximize the benefit that comes with being, having those two centers in the promise zone in our respective districts? Especially given the fact that, at least as it relates to the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative, we're, we're facing some challenges currently with regards to property management, ongoing property management and the resources necessary to do that, and there's a long story behind it. And remember too, that that's a, in both cases, their property is owned by the school district. And who knows what the future holds for, you know, their commitment, their ability to continue, from a fiscal standpoint, working in collaboration with, with both of us and the county to make sure that those, those two centers continue to thrive and meet their missions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Supervisor Serna, I agree 100% in anything we can do to help that and continue that. Ms. Dode, you brought up the avenues and, yeah, we've done some great stuff. I mean, the Habitat for Humanity and, you know, we're collaborating on some good stuff down there. The one thing that, just to put it in the back of your mind, this is a bit of a sidebar, but it's related and you opened the door, is, is, it does, and one of the public speakers said so today, even, it does drive me crazy to drive down the avenues and see so much boarded up multifamily when we have a housing crisis in Sacramento. There's gotta be something we can do to kickstart rehab and not just SHRA, but as a community. They've been sitting there empty and you, you know, I know you have made efforts to try to purchase some of the larger properties to no avail and I just want to continue to put some focus on there because we have opportunities down there that, you know, we just have to find, figure out how to take advantage of.
Correct.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, do have one speaker, and that is Kevin Carter.
Yes, I just wanted to just follow my brother's lead here. I've followed the Promise Zone project for the last probably four years. I've lived in the old park community. And one of the things I wanted to emphasize for that program that I'm working on now is a agriculture, agriculture apprenticeship, employment and housing program. And that's for families that are dealing with poverty and also students that are dealing with homelessness that may want to change their, their major into something more, more abroad. So I think the, I believe that this program, Promise Zone, is a very effective program and that, and that's needed, you know, in our area and in our community. And so far, so good, it's been a success. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I have no more cards on this and no more questions from the board, so thank you very much for your presentation. Off agenda? So I will now call cards that have been turned in by the public for items that are not on the agenda. Remember that the board will be very limited into what we can and cannot discuss when an item is not on the agenda. Gwendolyn Gamble. Good timing.
Hi, my name is Gwendolyn Gamble and I wanted, wanted to speak to you guys about what you guys talked about with SHRA. I think the plans that you guys have set out were, you know, really good gung-ho plans, but isn't this a repeat of what you guys have already tried to do? I believe it is, I think a couple of times, and I think you guys aren't really, you know, actually you guys aren't really, you know, getting any results from it, so I think maybe you guys should switch up or maybe you guys should put a different, I don't know, program in charge of helping the homeless because SHRA is definitely not getting it or any of the programs you really have in charge of helping the homeless because there's still a lot of homeless. The crisis is still going on and it's only getting bigger. I'm not a part of it, but I literally go and like, I can't like, my community is that. I can't, there's no way other around it. And they're waiting on you guys and the programs to, you know, fulfill these promises that aren't getting fulfilled at all whatsoever. They're actually being chastised by your sheriff's department on a daily basis, waiting for your promises and that's not okay and that's not right. And I feel like you guys aren't, I don't know, I feel like more funding wouldn't be, wouldn't even make a difference because you guys really didn't do anything with the first set of funding you got. So, I don't know, like I said, maybe you guys should try a different route, try some different programs. You guys might, you know, get a different result because I think going in the same route for the second time, well, multiple times, is just not going to get a different, it's insane to think, to get it, try to get a different result with the same type of, you know, same actions, so.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Kim Church?
So I'm here to go, starter, here to go on record here, the overpolicing of our unhoused neighbors, particularly during the aforementioned shelter crisis, is the most illogical, expensive, and punitive response to this county's humanitarian crisis. These policies and procedures are not mitigating the effects of the shelter crisis. Quite the contrary, the county's excessive enforcement of codes and ordinances is literally exacerbating the public health and safety crisis that you yourself declared. The paper trail overtly states the county's priority was really with the HEAP funds and that the only way to get those funds was to declare a shelter crisis. And then your grant proposal neglected the emergency need for what? Shelter. This is how the county of Sacramento is building housing on the backs of people who Brother Carter said live in deep poverty, whose shelterlessness leaves them susceptible on a daily basis. People have been moved five times since they've been displaced from Stockton Boulevard specifically. The cruel move-alongs, the unusual sweeps, this results in perpetual displacement and trauma. This vicious cycle is very well-funded from law and code enforcement. That public money would be better served solving the shelter crisis by what? Opening shelter. Look, I agree that we are also in the middle of a housing crisis, however, this has not been formally declared. What has been declared is a shelter crisis, not a housing crisis. But apparently that was just what the county did in order to solve a related, but not the same crisis. There's no reason the county could not unlock the gates at 5700 Stockton Boulevard or any of the other vacant facilities tonight. We have neighbors who remain unsheltered, which only increases trauma, decreases health, and decreases safety. At what point is this derelict of duty on the part of the governing body? The plain truth is that the county is divided into fifteen community area plans. They all have homelessness and they all need shelter. When can taxpayers expect- When can taxpayers expect our money to go to the most fundamental needs of our most vulnerable neighbors? As I peruse the agenda today, I learned that just today, you exchanged $250 million. One quarter of a billion dollars was on the consent agenda, no discussion. Not one mention of the emergency need for immediate temporary shelter. It's like you're allergic to the topic or something. It's honestly really weird to witness, but we're following your silences. So, I'm here on behalf of my neighbors, who I have been involved with since early January, maybe December. Many of us were serving people at Stockton Boulevard site, as many as well as other sites, for a long time, with no money, and we didn't ask permission, because we weren't asking for your funding. So, we are here to tell you that there are plenty of organizations and community efforts, grassroots efforts, that would support helping people to create safe and healthy outdoor encampments in the meantime, until we have the housing that sounds like it's going to be very great when it's built. But in the meantime, people need shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Jones.
She stepped out to you in the restroom.
Betty Rios.
Hi, I'm Betty Rios, and I'm from 5700 Stockton Camp. On May 1st, my arm got broken by the sheriff's department, and on top of it, on top of it, I am still in touch with everybody that was living there. They had been moved five times from their same spot. Now, they have no equipment, no clothing, no food, no nothing, because the sheriff has came out and took it, all from them five different times. Now, they're staying underneath the stores, underneath the awnings. There's people out there that don't have pacemakers in them, they're handicapped, they're disabled, nowhere to go, and nobody's offering them shelter. I was putting a program for self, um, self housing, okay? I already have a broken arm. What about the people who are disabled? What about the ones that have pacemakers or a handicap or anything? They didn't get offered. And they said they offered everybody there? No, they offered five people there. One lady went to jail because she did not take that shelter. This is wrong. Right now, I'm going to let you know, Pat Kennedy, in your district alone, there's going to be 222 more people homeless in 30 days, because they closed down two more apartment sites. What about them? And now, it's not going to be adult houses out there, if they're from 16 months and older, it's going to be out there on the street in 30 days. It's not right. We need a place to lay our head and have shelter. I'm not saying our place was the best place they ever was, but when we did get the dumpster site, thank you, Kennedy, for bringing us in, we had one and a half filled up by the next morning. The time the other dumpster that was there, the reason that it didn't get dumped is because they, when you got your toilet thing in there for us, they put it right in front of the dumpster that they could not pick it up. So, after they cleaned the toilets, like one time, I had four guys move that toilet thing over that it can be dumped, and nobody still came out and dumped it. Now, right now, I don't know what's going to happen to the people. They're getting heat stroke, they don't have no food, they don't have no shelter or nothing left, because they've been displaced by the sheriffs five times, and then all their stuff got taken away.
Thank you, Betty.
Betty, before you leave, can I just ask you a question? So, I trust you've been offered shelter opportunities?
Yes, I was placed in one.
Okay, and what happened?
It's been a lie. They told me I was going to be able to have best passes come back and forth. I don't get them. I was told I was allowed to be gone from the house three nights in a row. I'm only allowed three times a month to be away from my home at the shelter, or I'll be, I will be thrown out.
So, you were in a shared housing situation, you and your, if that wasn't the case, you, but you're willing to accept shelter, obviously you have some conditions.
I'm in it right now.
You're in, you are in it right now?
Yes, I'm in it, S H H.
Okay. Just one other question, because obviously, you know many of the folks who are out there on the street, as do others who've spoken. In some cases, people decline shelter.
No, none of them declined shelter.
Nobody's declined shelter?
No.
No one?
They were told they had to be put on a wait in a list. Only five of us got offered shelter, and five of us went, except one lady went to jail.
Yeah, I heard that, I heard that. So, you have others who?
Only five of us got offered and got placed.
Okay, and so?
They said that's all they had room for.
Yep.
Okay.
There was 200 people.
No, there was 94 people living in that camp.
Okay, so, again, you know, we don't have an abundance of beds, but I guess I would just turn to our folks, if in fact, and I certainly, Supervisor Kennedy's been very engaged in this, but I would just say that if we have, obviously, folks who are vulnerable and willing to go into shelter, and maybe we have such a backlog in the transition piece of that, but I think that certainly presents a real challenge for us. So, again, I know that we have social workers who go out on a regular basis trying to help folks.
There's never been no social workers came out to that camp, nothing, nobody's ever been able to help us.
Well, I think some did, I'm not going to get it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt. I just want to be warned and make everybody cautious that this is the subject of ongoing litigation, and so we need to be careful.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Again, I just, again, I just listened to your testimony, I recognize that. Okay, thanks, Betty.
Thank you, Betty. Mario Morales.
He also stepped out.
Thank you. Robert Copeland.
What the speaker said, that was a spoke just before me, said it all. They need help now? How about all the other people in other parts of the county that are not getting housing, that are homeless? Were they offered housing?
No.
I don't know. But why do you kick a person when they're down? I mean, they're trying to survive, and the police raid the camp, Benny gets a broken arm? All this stuff gets taken? Why? Why don't we have a rogue sheriff that uses heavy-handed tactics and still try to help the people? And he has a history of doing this. I mean, we need to replace our sheriff.
Yes.
And we need more housing, we need shelters now, not next year, not two years from now. We need to get them now. How many, out of that $20 million that you did get from the, how much has it been spent to actually help the homeless population when you declared a shelter crisis? And why don't you declare housing crisis, too? Because we got a housing crisis. I mean, the county, and the city, and the state, and the federal government has fumbled the football, as they say. People need help now, not later. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Frederick Gale. Mr. Gale, we are in receipt of the handout that you provided.
Thank you very much. That should be very definitive, definitive, that it's begun to waste a lot of my time on nothing, and it's like maybe a Macbeth kind of situation or something. I was in industrial engineering, I did that, procurement analyst, fire control, management analyst, and I've had public service quite a bit. And I keep getting these letters, and you got that one. I got one many years ago, and I think that whoever that person is, they need mental help or something. And this is not, I was born in '31. I went to, what is the other guy? El Ducey, Schickelguber, as if they were on my property going around looking to see what I have. What is that I have that I couldn't store if I do? But I do have a shed, bicycles there, and I think a couple of trains are in there, and polo balls and what have you. And I wondered, what does this person, we do have a mental segment of health in Sacramento, maybe that person needs that. Either that person would become, put their name on something, maybe I could find out who they are, and we come and take them, or tour my place, my house and my yard, or what have you. But I don't want to be paying a fine for foolishness, and I question the competence of the person the inspector came out, or whoever. I tried to get a call to that person's boss to get their position description, what their qualifications are. But I want to make sure, this conversation you have had today has been tremendous. And I have always had the greatest respect for this board, the Board of Supervisors, because Sac City has become a laughingstock at times. But this, to me, was the Supreme Court, where I could get great results, people who throw things out, not just foolishness. As I say, I was born in '31, went through a lot of stuff. Dust Bowl, Allison Davis, American Delima, and we got the same stuff.
Can you wrap up, Mr. Gale?
Of course. I'll make it, that's the whole thing. I appreciate, as my kids used to say, make daddy go last, and you can shut him up.
You're not, you're not quite last.
Thank you, Fred.
Mr. Gale?
Mr. Gale?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say, you know, someone from my office has been out to your house, and I've seen the pictures. I would request that you work with the county executive's office, maybe Mr. Leonard, and my office, too.
My invitation is still open. If I didn't have you all at once.
Right, well, you need to.
If I had you all on, I would, we would have tea and sandwiches.
But to further work your complaint, okay.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you.
Nikki Jones has returned.
Mr. Leonard, if you'd give Mr. Gale your card, that'd be great. Thank you.
Just add it to the collection.
So, I'm here to encourage us to recognize that no matter how much we push people around, they continue to exist, and they continue to matter. To paraphrase longtime advocate John Krains, if you don't designate a space, you've designated every space. And this continues to be true in this case, in alleys, fields, strip malls, nooks, crannies, and any bit of ground, hard or soft, thousands of Sacramento neighbors attempt to find rest each night. And as a status quo, I believe we can all agree that it's tragic and unacceptable. But then, the question presents itself, how do we respond with the respective power that we have? For folks living outside, much of their energy, their power, goes into survival. This was certainly the case for those living at the Stockton Boulevard encampment. And blessings, Patrick Kennedy, and perhaps false hope, when dumpsters and porta-potties finally arrived at the encampment, it felt as if perhaps the larger community was realizing the benefit of adding value and support towards those attempts at survival. It seemed as though we might be taking small steps to address the actual public health crisis that people living outside are at all times experiencing. But on May 1st, when this board, Patrick Kennedy and SHRA, finally bowed to the long-term pressure of the Stockton Boulevard partnership and the local law enforcement officials to send in the homeless outreach team with no shelter, flanked by dozens of sheriffs in riot gear to displace approximately 100 residents, trash, trash compact homes, medications, survival gear, vital documents, and other personal property in both literally and metaphorically their community, I realized that that was not the case, and that we were, in fact, doubling down on criminalization and forced migration in our county limits. And that seeing it so closely and hearing folks' response, I can only call it torture. And as in the midst of an actual and declared shelter crisis, of course, we need housing. It's what we've been asking for all along, but as today's presentations proved more than anything, for most folks outside or on the edge of homelessness, that housing is years off, if it will ever reach them at all. And I don't know that y'all appreciate the destabilizing nature of your unconstitutional move-along policies for the people it is enforced upon and their, and their support systems. And as a longtime outreach worker who has collaborated with other providers and people living outside to create self-determined stability and strategies out of homelessness, I can testify that the general consensus among us, people who directly provide service and those it affects, that ongoing displacement interrupts, disrupts, and destroys the possibility for successful service intervention. And I invite you, those in power who are calling the shots, who are sending out these outreach teams with no tangible services, even their trucks empty, as people are forced to push and push and push their belongings, I invite you to join those working towards survival as consensus. If y'all join, you know, it's inter-agency counsel on homelessness, you know, the Ninth Circuit Court, we've all decided that this criminalization, this displacement, I'm going to go ahead and wrap it up, that this displacement, not only is it not cost-effective, not only is it wasteful, but it's harmful, that it hurts lives every single day. And y'all can choose to do something different. You can choose to hire actual outreach workers, actual social workers, but instead, you send out the same police that are moving people along, and that continues to be unacceptable. Something different.
Thank you. Mac Worthy. Now, we're going to see if Mr. Gale's children are correct.
He's only about four years old. What it is, you've got to streamline SHRA. SHRA should specialize in housing, not education, not child development, and not medical. Get rid of that. That's too much in one package, too much in one package, because too many people paw through the loophole. And also, do you want this on what we, the person called you for us to talk about? You want me to raise that today?
No, we won't do it here. But I will just say to you, just briefly, that the person did call my office, and we have been in touch with that person.
Yeah.
That's as much as I'll say here today.
Yeah, but see, the thing about it, the federal government is involved in the black mold, too. So, we see, see the state governor, we see everybody, we can see, see all the way to Washington, DC. It's critical. Also, we found, in that investigation, we, she have an attorney, but he's in Oakland, we found a name, Antoine, a developer, two citations on construction and on environment. Also, we found that he put, he offered $500,000 to put his, him and his wife's name on the thing downtown for the city. So, you're dealing with some things here, people, be aware of, just like the lady said, the $500,000 came in. We got to be anonymous, big-time money coming into here. Somebody buying somebody. See, these things we got to get rid of. We got to look at, when we see that these things come through, and the city got too much property, we see the same thing the federal government done for years. They owned this town because of the basins. Now, the city and county began to own it. Educate people, the repercussion of living into public property. It's a repercussion to live there, people. That should be a quota on how much public property can be against free enterprise. Educate the people on when you say a developer come in, and when the properties leave that prop, leave that piece of property, where it goes out of the city. We got to understand that. And when we talk about home ownership, we got to teach people, all this stuff about Wells Fargo do this, let's teach people about the sale tax. When the sale tax come in and go to, into a bank, go to the state before it comes to city and county, how much interest does it draw?
Can you wrap up, Mr. Worthy?
So, you know, these are the things that we want to know, the public to know, because the public is awful. That's not only black, across the board, people. It is a disgrace for the knowledge of what's going on in government here.
Thank you, sir. And we do have the return appearance of Mario Morales. That is the last card that I have.
I just put one in for, also, it's mine. What was on the agenda? Maybe you don't want to hear it from me, but.
No, I don't mind hearing from you, I just missed it, because we had two other cards from you. Go ahead.
Thank you, board, for having me here today. My name is Mario Morales, I'm from Stockton Boulevard. I was one of the people that the state threw out of the little homeless camp from over there. And, I mean, I'm sitting here and listening to most of this meeting this morning, and I feel overwhelmed, because it feels like I'm fighting a giant, just trying to, you know, get some safe housing, or safe spots to stay. You know, and it's true, they're moving us up down Stockton Boulevard and to the cemetery, like the one man said, but they're pushing us out of the cemetery this past week. You know, and all we have left is to move back to Stockton Boulevard, you know? I made a suggestion to you, Mr. Patrick Kennedy, last time we had that emergency meeting about, since you took all the homeless out of there, they're going to be back in front of the businesses. You know, and we don't want to be in front of these businesses. It's embarrassing. I really don't have much to say, because I feel overwhelmed, like I'm fighting a giant.
Mr. Serna.
Thank you. Mr. Morales, thanks for your testimony. Have you been offered any assistance from county social workers or others at the county for some shelter options?
No, not really. You know, they came out and they talked to, they got my. You know, they came out and they talked to, they got my name and stuff, but, you know, they've never came back. I'm still right there on Young Street.
Will you do me a favor before you leave today? After we close the meeting down, if you talk to Mr. Wagstaff, he's the gentleman all the way to the right, get his card and talk to him. If you would have a conversation with him, you might be able to get more detail about your situation and find out if there's an opportunity for us to help you find that shelter.
How about some of these other people who I sleep next to and who come to sleep next to me? Can I give them his information too?
Sure, yeah.
I said, I don't have anything to say.
Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for being here. Wanda, I have a card for you for 41 and 42, not for this, but you're welcome to come to the podium.
On the bottom, it's, we're not on the agenda? The rogue police department?
It says that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm right, I did, I put that on there, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I thought maybe I had lost my mind.
No, your mind's just fine.
Okay. The things that these people are experiencing, the first people that they see are telling them, we want you to disappear. Don't be seen, don't be anything, you can't be anything. How would you like each and one of you to say, oh, I'm nobody? Okay, you guys don't know how it feels because none of you have been homeless. I have. 1989, I had three teenagers, I told you. And when we talk to, the first people that come about, the police. They demean you, they disrespect you, they have belly clubs, guns, and they're, it's not constitutionally right. How would you like to wake up in the first thing in the morning and you see a belly club in your face? I wish that you guys would experience that. How would you like to be said, you don't want to be appeared? We don't want to see your existence. How would you guys like to feel that? You don't exist. Well, you guys are doing nothing, so we may as well expect you not to exist because nothing's happening. We have a rogue sheriff that makes statements that are so off the wall that no one will legally touch him. So his officers are walking the same line he is, doing whatever they want, however they want. Trust me, I can show you pictures. I have video of disrespect. I will never respect another officer as long as I live to this day unless this stops, stops. My father was in law enforcement. I've never been treated disrespectful or pushed or tried to be killed by an officer. One officer tells me to get away from his vehicle, I do it and the other officer hits me. Who do you listen to? Where's your consciences? Where's your compassion? I'm compassionate about what I feel because I've been there, I know what these people are doing. And now I can say, I've been tried to be killed by the sheriff's department here in Sacramento. And don't please tell me I have only a few minutes because I have the rest of my life.
Thank you, thank you, Wanda. Okay, that's the last card I have. We will go into recess and go into closed session.
Yeah, come up with a solution. Don't come up with some bare-faced lie like the city does. Yeah, I've been to both of you guys' meetings, I see no predictiveness of either one of you. I think we need to get rid of your, the damn office. We could run it better. We move. You guys just provide the things that need it for the homeless? You wouldn't have a problem with the homeless.